Am I painting an extreme example, extreme hypothetical? Maybe so, but let me tell you my experience on Sunday, February 2nd going up.
Is my bathroom new?
Yeah, there's a meeting going on.
I get there, whole pavilion's full, whole pavilion's full. I mean, it's clearly an organized event. There were hundreds of people, okay?
Our second speaker is Mr. Alex Stein. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Alex Stein, and I'm a citizen of the earth. I live in the North American region. And I just want to say, I came here not that long ago, Mayor West. Remember talking about the Cowboys before the season started and what happened? They didn't make the playoffs, they stunk like usual. I just want to bring that up. But I also want to give a shout out. We got a lot of good things happening. We got to give a shout out to my boy RFK Jr., that's right. He's been taking this methylene blue. Are you familiar with this, Mayor West? This stuff is good stuff. Let me tell you something, they, this like, uh, this stuff will just make you, it'll make you young again. Now, it is kind of dying, it'll make your teeth a little blue. But RFK takes this, and let me tell you something, Cheryl Hines, there's a reason she's not married to Larry David in real life. It's because of that RFK, you know what the F stands for? And it's not Fitzgerald. But I came here for a serious thing, very serious thing. I'm not even kidding. You might have saw this, but a congressman from the state of Texas by the name of Dan Crenshaw just called for the assassination of my biological stepfather, Tucker Carlson. Now, this might be funny, but to me, it's not funny. And you guys as elected officials should try to, I guess, expose this, because I don't think it's very cool that a sitting congressman would say that he wants somebody dead, especially a celebrity that has a lot of influence and a lot of fans. So I think, you know, morally, that would be unjust to kill somebody, period. But to kill somebody that has, you know, an adoring audience is absolutely sick. And if you look at Dan Crenshaw, he's an alcoholic, he's a dwarf, he's, you know, five foot six, he has one eye, and it's not even that good, the one that he has left. And listen, I respect that he lost his eye serving this country. And I respect every man and woman in uniform. But the idea that he went and found weapons of mass destruction, which he didn't, and that he still wants to go send kids to go fight in a war like Ukraine for literally nothing, and I think they're going to come to an agreement here by April, that the, uh, first agreement that they pitched the first week of this war is going to end up being the outcome. So it's all BS. Dan Crenshaw is a globalist, he does not care about this country, and he cannot attack my biological stepfather, Tucker Carlson. That is not okay with me. Tucker's done a lot for me, he's helped my family, he's helped this country. And Tucker speaks for the common person. He speaks, even though he is a wealthy man, he speaks for the middle class, believe it or not. And Dan Crenshaw is a guy that's inherited money, and now he's inherited the power and knowledge, and he's able to stalk trade, and he's doing all kinds of stuff in Congress that is absolutely aberrant, apparent, you know what I mean, bad. But my point is this, you need to, Mayor, blow the whistle on this. I don't think it's cool that Dan Crenshaw, probably drunk, allegedly cheats on his wife, I don't know if that's true, but I just talked to girls that said that they did stuff. A lot of girls say they do stuff, and you know, they're full of it. But my point is, Dan Crenshaw calling for the assassination of Tucker Carlson is not cool. And I know Dan's watching this. Dan, I just want to say, you're a little baby back biatch. And if you try to mess with freaking Tucker Carlson, you're not going to like how it ends. And all your Navy SEAL training is going to get thrown out the door, a little Danny boy Crenshaw. So Mayor West, please, you know, expose this. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys, your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
Okay, this guy's, this guy's, hey Mayor, who is this guy? He keeps on following us around.
Mayor, I'd like to call the point of order.
Yeah, I know, but what is your problem?
Uh, can we, can we handle this?
No, but this guy, no, but Mayor West, my girlfriend's standing over here. He goes and walks, I know, but I'm just saying, dude, it's not your job to go walk around my girlfriend like a freaky old man. Like, sit down and watch the meeting, dude. But, I know, but you see, you see how he's walking around?
He's sitting down.
Yeah, I know, but don't threaten my girlfriend. I don't give a damn how old you are, trying to stand in front of a little girl. You're pathetic. Yeah, hey, I'll talk all I want, you old man, and I'll be at your funeral too. I'm a coward, I'm right here. Walk away from what, Baldi? What are you going to do, bald-headed boy? What are you going to do, you going to cry about Israel some more? I know, but he's sitting here crying about people wearing masks?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight.
Was he in your face to be standing right there? He was literally standing right here next to me.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, welcome to Primetime with Alex Stein. I'm your host, Alejandro Stein, and we got a great show. We got Edgar the Puppet. But before we get to Edgar, I got to welcome on my boy Gerard Michaels. You know him, he's a libertarian guy, he's an ex-professional athlete. He's also a UCB-trained improv actor, so I didn't know that. Congratulations.
Yeah, I got to tell you, Robert E. Lee trying to creep on your girl, that was not all right, man.
I know, that was weird. We actually need to get into that video a little bit. I might have told Zach to edit out some of the commentary that I did at the end, but I know, I actually am happy that you guys got to see what really happened, because it was that, it was that crazy. And then like, the bald-headed guy was like talking, the guy that was bald, he was like talking bad about Israel or whatever. It was just a weird meeting, I'll tell you that much, the vibes, it was very low vibrational, but the mayor kept it high vibrational. That Mayor West is a good mayor. I just want to applaud him, and I go to a lot of city councils. And the way that they run their meetings at Cappell is incredibly professional, and I really appreciate the courtesy that the mayor of Cappell shows, not just me, but all public speakers. He actually truly believes in the First Amendment, so I want to applaud him. Now, the creepy old guy, dude, what I didn't like is, I don't mind if somebody creeps on me, but I go to a lot of these protests, Gerard, and my girlfriend goes with me, because Jimmy's too scared. And when I'm, when I'm vulnerable or whatever, they go after her. I'm saying, when I'm away, and she's vulnerable is what I meant to say, then they start attacking her. So it's like, I don't know what to do in this situation, because normally that's at a protest, but this is very weird, because it was at a city council meeting.
Well, I mean, the guy does own Jurassic Park, so he probably has some good money. You might maybe let him in.
Dude, if that guy owned Jurassic Park, man, I love that movie. What was that old guy's name in Jurassic Park? What was the doctor's name?
It was Baldi McBaldi.
Oh, yeah, well, but that, gosh, you know, they just said, I just read an article that they say, I don't believe it, that they can recreate dinosaurs in within five years. Do you think that's true or false?
I think, um, yeah, well, I mean, yeah, sure, let's go with yes.
I don't think so, all right.
Now, are they going to be able to make them fornicatable through AI?
Maybe, probably. They could, well, what they could do is, they can harvest their semen, their dinosaur semen, and I think they can artificially inseminate baby velociraptors.
Can I ask you one thing before we move on? You've, uh, you've been under attack recently by the Vatos?
By Hispanics, yes, and I love Mexicans. We're very pro-Mexican on this show. I eat Mexican food all the time, love their cuisine, and I love their women, big booty Latinas. Sorry prepaid, but you know that I am partial to the Latinas. I love them, yes.
Who, do you, do you think, uh, Robert E. Lee there was, was the closest you ever came to, to catching hands?
No, I've been way closer to catching hands. And I, actually, there's a clip of me in Mexico, I haven't ever posted this, where me and a Mexican dude, you know, hey, we squared up, and he swung at me and kind of like hit my shoulder. I didn't punch back, but I squared up. There's been times, way closer times, where I was, I felt like I didn't want to fight, because I don't want to go to jail, but there's been times, and I, like I said, I haven't ever fought. I always try to be, you know, in football, the second guy always gets the flag.
Sure, yeah.
So if I punch, even if I'm punched first, like, there was a time in Austin where that happened, I know that I'm going to be the one that gets in trouble.
You're a provocateur especial. We need to send you to Canada. If Ford tries to do anything with the electric grid, you need to go there to make sure that by the morning, there is a nuclear sub in Lake Erie.
You think so? I like, I miss Rob Ford, the guy that OD'd on crack or had a heart attack. He was my favorite mayor. He was, gosh, we need more guys like Rob Ford.
Man of the people.
We need more politicians to smoke crack. Like, I'm not even kidding, I'm dead serious when I say this. I'm, no, look at me, please put it on me. Marion Barry smoked crack, was the mayor of DC, then got reelected. Honestly, DC's been downhill ever since. I mean, imagine, imagine this, let's just go, we're in imagination land. You got a mayor that doesn't sleep. You got a president doesn't need to sleep because he's high on crack. Yes, he's going to make some poor decisions, but at least he's making some decisions 24 hours. I mean, talk about a, a business that never closes. You give a politician some crack, and that will help solve our problems. Because you've, have you ever experimented with any sort of upper-speed type stimulant drugs?
Yes, uh, me and, uh, Chris Farley, the only two cocaine addicts to ever gain weight.
Yeah, well, that's because you're a stud, and you don't let the cocaine dominate you. You can still go and eat Taco Bell after it. But my point is, you take these stimulants, and not that I've ever done that, but I've seen people doing them in movies, and I know that oftentimes these people do these stimulants, and they come up with business ideas.
Yeah.
So imagine this, we got AOC high on crack, Dan Crenshaw high on crack. There's no better way to bring the left and right together than with a crack pipe. And I know that sounds goofy, and that sounds crazy, but, you know, I believe in it this day and age, the marijuana's laced with fentanyl. I think it might be safer to actually use medically-grade cocaine to help these politicians, and crack, crack is allowed, to do their jobs better and be more efficient in their duties.
Angling for an Adderall sponsorship is why you are the pimp on a blimp.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Adderall doesn't have as many euphoric feelings as the white devil's dandruff, so, not the same, but it'll do in the meantime. So, we have a great guest. Are you familiar with, oh, before I get into our guest, you see this beautiful flag right here? Can we zoom out real quick? Yes, you see this Gulf of America? This is available at, uh, where is the, oh, you see this? La, 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 la. Well, you can buy this plus lots of other merch at shop.blazemedia.com. We just released our Gulf of America Hawaiian shirts as well. So use the code BLIMP10 for 10% off. That's right, guys, that's shop.blazemedia.com. Go get this Gulf of America flag. And you know I was talking about how I squared up earlier? It's because I was asking Latino dudes if they were happy about the Gulf of America changing to, I mean, Gulf of Mexico changing to Gulf of America, and I was in Cozumel on the Gulf.
This should be in every frat house in the SEC by Monday.
I think so too. So if you're a college-age young gentleman, I know there are a lot of college-age fans of this show, because I'm on a lot of college campuses, so I would really appreciate if you put one of these in your dorm, tweet it at me, and I will retweet your derriere. All right, guys, we did that. Now, we have to welcome on, this guy's great. He is a puppeteer, his name's, or he's a puppet, excuse me, excuse me, I don't want to ruin the illusion, and his name is Edgar. And I believe that he is an illegal immigrant puppet, if I, if I, uh, is that, is that correct, Jimmy?
Uh, he was self-described as the first DEI hire for the Daily Caller. I do not know if he's illegal.
Well, we will find out his immigration status right now as we welcome on the legend himself, the troll of all trolls, Edgar the Puppet. Edgar, how you doing, my friend?
I'm doing above average, sir. I, I, can you hear me?
Yes, barely, but yes, I can hear you. No, I got you loud and clear. How you doing, Ed?
Oh, great, great, I'm sorry. I'm, you know, I am, I'm, I confess, sir, I'm kind of fangirling.
Oh, wow! You know what?
Yes, I am. I am, I'm fangirling because you're the master troll. You, you taught me so much. I've tried to walk in your footsteps, but I ain't got no feet. It's really difficult, uh, but man, it's so great to meet you, sir. Absolutely fangirling.
Edgar, that is too kind, but I'm not going to sit here and I'm not going to placate you. If your immigration status is that you're illegal, I still believe that we should deport you, because you're not a big booty Latina. So can you at least disclose what your, not only your deportation, or not only your immigration status, but also your vaccine status, please?
You know, the only thing jabbing me is a rock-hard fist jammed deep up my abdomen. Otherwise, I'm, I'm, uh, I haven't been impaled by anything unloving, you know? And I hope we can all say the same. How about you, Gerard?
Yeah, Gerard, what do you say about that? Do you have a big hand up your derriere right now?
No, no, you got to pay extra for that kind of action, but the, uh, I'm a pure-blood man.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
What does a pure-blood mean? You're not vaccinated?
You're gunning.
It means he's been pegged.
Dude, I love the vaccine. I was doing some of the vaccine last night, uh, you know, with some of my buddies down in Deep Ellum, we were getting all vaxxed out. Now Edgar, you are a viral sensation.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us, how is your love life as a puppet? Or is there no love life because you have no genitalia?
You know how to hurt a puppet. Bring it up the most painful thing. Every episode, I am hitting on hotties left and right. I ask them, "Hey, baby, you want to go out with a puppet?" And they say, "You ain't got no equipment, boy." And I soak off solidly and jam myself back on this fist that I find inside me. I don't know who it belongs to, but I can feel it.
Well, listen, we all are trying to find pleasure in this crazy day and age. So, I don't know, Jimmy, which, which clips do we have for SOT? Is the Elon Omar is probably my favorite one. Real quick, before we even dive into you, let's give you some context. And this video blew up, got millions of views. I love this video of you teasing a woman who married her brother allegedly, but I mean, I think we're pretty dang sure about it. So let's play SOT number, SOT number two, excuse me.
Hi, we're here eagerly waiting for Ilhan Omar to speak. Ilhan Omar is famous for many, many things. I want to speak very softly and respectfully here. Ilhan Omar, did you consummate the marriage to your brother? Which is worse, immigration fraud or brotherfucking? Are there any other relatives you fancy, Ilhan? How did your brother propose to you? All right, tax billionaire, great.
That is so funny. What do you mean, you continue, you'll be arrested? So where was that, Ed?
That was at the triangle, which is south, uh, west, southeast of the US Capitol. It's where all the blowhards come to bloviate, including Ilhan Omar and a lot of members of her squad. They were all there that day, and I, I was frustrated, Alex. No press has asked Ilhan Omar that, that very pertinent question. Are you a brother-fer? And someone had to do it, someone had to step up. It might as well be the DEI hire of the Daily Caller. Boom, baby!
Edgar, I mean this, when I say this, you are a hero for doing that, and I know how difficult it is to yell and scream at a serious thing like that. And I know exactly where that triangle is. It was about 100 feet from the Capitol steps, where I famously called AOC my favorite big booty Latina. So I'm very familiar with the area. So how were you received when they're going to get arrested? Really, you are allowed to stand there. Were you actually worried, though, that they weren't going to arrest you just for kind of yelling? You're allowed to do that.
Yeah, well, you know what? When a cop with a gun approaches you, you just tend to listen. And, uh, you know, he said, "If you keep on going, you're going to be arrested." So, I, look, I support the police, but we have been hassled a lot because exercising our very loud First Amendment rights.
Yeah.
And that's okay.
Is it okay? Because you know, I've been, I've been having this existential crisis. And you know, they say we're conservatives, so we got to back the blue. And I do back the blue, and I know it is hard to do a job, and I'd like to get Gerard's opinion on this. But I still don't trust a damn cop as far as I can throw one. So I mean, do we, should we still trust cops, Gerard? I mean, limiting his free speech, I don't like to see that.
I never eat a pig because a pig is a cop. But I gotta terminate a, like Alex, but you know what? You, you did, you capitulated pretty quick there, which goes back to your original line of questioning, clearly an illegal.
Yeah, you are illegal, and I think that that's the proof right there, that you did need to give him any kickback.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're not familiar with the First Amendment, Edgar, are you?
We have Tom Holman here right now, Tom!
Tom, come on down! Tom, come here, he's coming here right now to, he's going to hack your computer, and he's going to find your location. Okay.
Screw you, Tom! You're never going to kiss me alive! Now, listen, now, listen, Alex, and you listen to me, big boy. I got something to say to you. You won't deport me because you don't know where I live. But also, P.S., um, listen, I can't go to prison. I hope you understand. I have a gaping wide puppet hole that will definitely be abused if I get incarcerated. It's not going to happen, bitch.
That is, that is very true.
Elon Omar, would you?
Let's see.
I got to tell you, I think I would.
No, let's ask Edgar real quick, yeah, because, so, okay, Edgar, if you did have genitalia, if God created you, you know, anatomically correct, which, you know, we're all God's creations, even you, would you sleep with Elon Omar? Because let's just be real, she's, her body's not bad. I mean, she's not, she's not out of shape, she's just, you know, kind of looks weird.
Yeah. Look, Ilhan Omar is stunningly beautiful, and I'm sorry I had to confront her. As for, you know, any sexuality, look, I am soft, I am long, I'm like one big clitoris, to be honest. But, um, you know, that's as far as I get in terms of metaphor. Can you say that word?
No, we're not allowed to say that, and we're going to be in probably a lot of legal trouble, so it is okay, um, but...
I'm sorry, Alex!
It's okay, it's okay, but Edgar, this, this next one, I'm really mad at you about. Honestly, I love the Elon Omar, but this, this one, I'm really mad. Why did you go and mess with the Patriot Front? Aren't they the best FBI agents that, that the government can hire? Why? I mean, I thought you backed the blue. So can we play SOT number two? And then I want you to...
Are you the leader of Patriot Front?
I'm not going to talk to your puppet.
Now, will you talk to me, though? Where's your [bleep] mask? Aren't you concerned about disease? What about disease? What about the disease of LARPing? Are you a federal agent? Are you a sheriff's department? Why wouldn't you show us your identity? I am not ashamed to be out here. If you're such a good cause, take off the mask. COVID's gone. I salute you, you're maskless. Why can't your bitches be like you? Why are they such federal bitches? Such [bleep] Leos? I see you laugh at you, [bleep] bitch! Take your mask off. If you laugh with me, you got to unmask your...
Who's worse, a libtard or a Patriot Front? Because I feel like those guys were actually kind of being a little affable. So what's worse to deal with on the street?
Well, dang it, here's the thing. Um, the Patriot Front did not try to strike me, did not try to kill me. They still filled me with a kind of fear that I do get around law enforcement. I did definitely get that cop vibe, like a cop on day-off vibe from them. They are definitely feds, they look like their, their dress is right out of the FBI academy. I mean, who are they fooling? I hope Cash Patel just fires them all.
Yeah, Cash does, wait, Edgar, we have to cut you out. Cash? Because if it is, the Patriot Front is an inside job, or, you know, we say they're agent provocateurs, we're going to know very soon, right? Wouldn't Cash Patel immediately 86 that program?
You know, this little puppet heart of mine has gotten his hopes up so often, Alex. I don't want to dream anymore. I want to rest. I want Hillary Clinton to be dragged away, or at least a pie to the face, but it hasn't happened yet, sir.
I'm sure Hillary Clinton's gotten plenty pies in her face.
Yeah, she has. Well, she, she definitely likes cream pies.
You men are disgusting!
Yeah, we are. And I'm talking about the delicious dessert that you can get, you know, Little Debbie's, they're delicious. But Edgar, real quick.
Yes, sir.
The Epstein release, are we going to get that? I mean, I, I'm just a little frustrated, I'm losing hope.
Okay, you know what? I'm so glad you asked this, Alice, because I want to tease a little video that I might be having coming out next week. I happened to confront a very special person who is on the flight logs of Epstein Island. I confronted him in the streets of Washington DC, along with his...
That's your hero.
Yeah, do you want to know who it was?
Yes.
It was Big Bird, and he was traveling around with his friend Globalist Elmo and the Count. And I confronted them all Project Veritas-style. I can't wait to show you, but I can't show you yet. I'm still editing, and my little fingers can only work so fast.
That is very true. Now, real quick, this, this video, this video is great. I really like SOT number four. This one wasn't as viral as Elon Omar, but still such a great video. Let's play SOT number four.
They're calling Elon Hitler! They're calling Trump Hitler! They're calling me Hitler!
Oh, no kids for me because of climate change and everything. Man, don't talk to me, the fashion. Oh, listen, oh, fuck you, mother.
Fascist puppet.
So would you become Elon Musk's baby mama for, uh, anything? All right, we have here an Antifa-style ladies. They believe in repressing your freedom of speech because God forbid you talk to anyone from the other side. This is why the left fails. They want to repress your rights. They're authoritarian people, they want you to not have a voice. It's so important that everything they say you hear, and nothing I say, no second opinions on anything. It's what they do, it's why you're a virgin at 35! Yeah, puppets do rule, and you know who doesn't rule? Authoritarians! Is that for both holes? Have you ever smiled in all of 2025? Why are you doing circles around me? Can I have your phone number? I'll let you put your hand inside me. Got to go, bye.
Edgar?
Yes, sir.
Are you, uh, where do you stand on the Ashley St. Clair Elon issue? I'm team Ashley, where do you stand? Are you team Elon?
Uh, I can't stand, Alex. Could you please stop mentioning it?
Look at this vagina-wearing, look at that, is that a vagina hat too, Edgar? So you're a...
No, no, it's, look, it makes me, look, the blue plus the pink makes me look trans, so I get to go anywhere I want. Come on, it's a very smart move.
No, it is smart, but it's not as smart as Deontay. This puppet is allowed anywhere. This is a DEI puppet.
Hi, I'm Deontay. You want to go gambling? You want to throw some dice? Edgar, have you ever thrown dice? You ever thrown dice and smoked cigars, Black and Milds? You like Black and Milds? I love Black and Milds.
Where did, where did Alex go?
Alex is gone, Alex is gone now, it's Deontay, and we're about to smoke some Black and Milds and play pool.
I think Alex, I'll tell you where Alex went. He descended into the land of disgrace, that's where he went.
No, what do you mean? Deontay's a good guy, he's a civil rights leader.
Yeah, Deontay's into big pegging from a big white arm.
Deontay's a heterosexual man. He's a guidance counselor at a high school, and he's only transitioned six kids this year, so he's actually losing his quota and might lose his job at the inner city. Deontay, why aren't you transitioning more kids? Deontay, why aren't you transitioning more kids?
It's hard to get these kids to get on the hormones and get so whacked out. They're willing to have their genitals and breasts cut off.
Do you agree, Edgar, that too many women are getting transgender surgery and getting mastectomies? Because I'm anti-mastectomies. I want to save all the breasts.
All right, man, look, let me show you my little drawing I made earlier. I love boobs. Whoops, sorry, my hand showed. I love boobs.
Who doesn't?
Accidents happen. Yeah, you know. So I want to save the boobs in general, but I understand that they can be a pain in the ass. They kind of get in the way. They get all flip-floppy and niply in the cold. But I think, you know, I would like to preserve them. And why are my hands making this movement?
I don't know. That is, you're like, it's like you're pinching the nips. Gerard, when you see a guy like Edgar and he's going viral, and you work so hard, Gerard, and I mean this with all due respect, you're one of the hardest working guys in the content creation game, and that a guy can put his hand up a puppet's ass and get millions of views instantly, does that make you feel dejected a little bit as a content creator?
Not at all. He's hilarious. There's way, 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 way worse things than this, like Rachel Zegler.
Rachel Zegler, that's what pisses you off?
Yeah, like, you know, Snow White and the Seven Queers pisses me off way more than, you know, Comic the Insult Smurf over there.
Oh, I like, ooh, shots fired. Comic the Insult Smurf. What do you have to say about that, Edgar?
Well, listen, if you're gonna insult me, here, let me just voice my frustration. I was promised Lila Hart here, who's more my size than this gigantor.
I'm just jealous. I'm the only, can I have JV over here, one of your producers? Can I shove my hand up their ass? Everybody else has a puppet but me.
No shoving your hand up Jimmy's ass. HR.
I'll enjoy it too much.
Your words, not mine.
I love this. This dude's hilarious.
Gerard, you are a walking sleep apnea poster child, except you're not a child. You're like a poster giant.
See, now, you're a-
Poster giant! Wow! Boom, roasted!
You're a lying, no-good illegal alien. I would never walk that's too close to cardio.
Yeah, get a real job, YouTuber.
Oh, boom! Damn, now we're getting intense. Whoa, okay, let me cool the room. Let me turn down the temperature and cool things off for a second. Now, Edgar, I want you to watch with us of my recent, this is just a little snippet from a recent women's march I went to in Dallas, Texas. I want to get your opinion, Ed.
Oh, yeah. I love this.
No, women belong in the kitchen. 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 No, why are transgender people leading a women's march? Wait, seriously? Oh, dude. Dude! Wait, seriously? Oh, dude!
So Edgar, you have a hand up your ass. That guy like kicked my butt, and it looked like it hurt, but I guess there's energy left. It almost like they just tapped my butt. But what do you do in those situations when you get assaulted? I feel like I'll always get in trouble if I retaliate.
All right, listen, sir, I'm gonna tell you your problem. You have a combination of things which leads to conflict. You say inflammatory things, and you have a very punchable face.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Everybody says that.
Yes, you do. It is the punchablest face I've ever met, except for Gerard's ass. Anyway, I think, who's that laughing in the background? You got poltergeists?
Yeah, we do. We do. Our producers are on Delta 9 weed, so they're laughing extra hard tonight. Edgar, what is your policy as an illegal immigrant? Do you partake in any barbiturates or stimulants? Uppers, downers, zoomers, zooters? Like, what do you like to do on your time off?
Yep, I eat cats.
No, Ed, I love, you know, I rescue cats. You know, I donate to cat charities. Cats are my life. I've dedicated all of my free time to preserving cats' sanctity. Are you trolling me? Because if you eat cats, I'm gonna have a, I'm about to eat your ass, Ed. I'm about to come to DC and eat you. I'm gonna eat that whole damn puppet.
Phrasing. Anyway, look, I know you're a pussy protector, but I think you pushed it too far. Some cats are evil. They deserve to be masticated.
Hey, I will agree, Gerard. Hey, Edgar, I will agree, even though I'm a cat lover, some cats are demented. And you can maybe argue dogs, but dogs, you can train a dog. You can't really train a cat. Like, a cat just naturally learns. So, Ed, you are right. There are some crazy cats out there. I've seen them, because I've tried to catch a feral cat, and I've gotten cut and infections. And I got HIV, I think, from a cat.
Sir, sir, you're not wrong. You're not wrong, sir. I want you to know, I've eaten so many cats, actually, I have gotten a couple diseases, and it is time for my pills. Doris, my intern, can I have some pills, please?
Oh, look, he's popping pills!
More, bitch! Thank you, thank you. That's enough, that's enough! Stop it! Sorry. Anyway.
We love pills. We love popping pills on this show. That's one of our favorite things to do. So thank you, Edgar, for popping pills. Okay, so you got this video? Wait, real quick, though. You got this Epstein video coming out. What else am I, what else are we need to be on the lookout for? And everybody needs to go follow Edgar the Puppet on Twitter. Is that the, right, a thing? Put the lower third for Ed. I want everybody to go follow. @PuppetEdgar, excuse me, I can't speak. I'm on too many pills.
@PuppetEdgar on Twitter. And if you're on YouTube, Ask America with Edgar. You'll find it. Don't be a bitch.
Don't be a bitch. Now, Edgar, before you go, I worry about your-
Oh, I got you!
No, you don't know. We have been here for plenty of time. I'm just saying. I worry, people always say, oh, Alex, my dad's like, I'm worried about your safety, this and that. Are you, on a serious note, Ed, are you worried about your safety going to these things, trying to film with a puppet? Because, you know, I look like I have a punchable face, but some of these Palestinian protests, they don't like it when you say gays for Palestine. They take it real personal. So at least I got both my hands. What are you worried about, Edgar? On a serious note, are you worried about somebody actually laying hands on you?
Uh, people lay hands on me all the time, and sometimes it's not just for pleasure. Yeah, I sometimes, look, we are dealing, sir, I want you to say, and I think you feel the same way. I love, I love everybody, including the crazies. And, you know, here's how you undo a crazy. You talk to them rationally, you be friends with them, you express love, and then maybe eventually they'll come to your side. It's happened before. Look at Anna Kasparian.
Hey!
She just need a little-
We love Anna Kasparian. She's red-pilled, great.
If it doesn't work, you can always rattle some SSRIs and throw them and then jog in the other direction.
Yeah. Anna Kasparian is my favorite former Lefty moistie out there. Really love her.
This is a very sexual episode for a children's show. I don't know if we've taken any lectures. This isn't a children's show, Edgar, you know that.
I feel like I'm the first person ever overdosed on mushrooms. And I woke up in a Space Ghost Coast to Coast here.
Kind of, a little bit like that. And Edgar's a star. What were you gonna say, Ed?
Oh, you know, so much crap. I'm so parched, I might need a soda, but I can't find my intern. Doris! Doris, where's my soda? Hold it. Doris is blind or retarded. Doris!
Doris, come on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Edgar, you do look dehydrated. Your skin, it looks like you're, I mean, you're very blue. I know you probably do need some hydration. Look at that, though.
Sad because, Alex, I'm sad because I think you're in danger. I saw that last clip of yours. I think you're a little angry, and I'm wondering how you're gonna process it long-term.
No, honestly-
You know-
Edgar, seriously, how did you know that? How did you know that I'm fighting, I'm having anger issues lately? How did you diagnose me so fast?
Oh, well, it was the face part of your body, sir. You know, my face is frozen into a Richter smile. I can't change. But you, yeah, look at you, scowl. Cheer up, bitch.
Edgar, I'm just not happy, dude. I recently lost a federal lawsuit against Clay Jenkins. He's a county judge, and I'm worried about them retaliating against me, Edgar. So right now, I haven't been sleeping very well, and I've been medicating myself with pasta from Olive Garden. And I just know that my health is taking a huge hit because my mental health is so bad.
How fat you gonna get, boy?
Fat. And I'm okay with that right now because I need something to medicate the pain. So how do you medicate the pain? You know, can you give me some advice?
Pills.
I need some pills. Jimmy!
You saw it in front of your eyes. Do you have short-term memory loss? I do it with pills, sir!
Jimmy, where can we get some Fentanyl in this town? Do you know Gerard?
Oh, no, no.
Gerard knows.
Gerard knows.
Don't listen to him. Gerard has Fentanyl in his pocket. Search him. Search the big boy now!
I'm better as a pasta dealer for you than I am as a Fentanyl dealer. I know where, you need carbohydrates in this town. I got you, bud.
Anyway, hey, Alex? I'm wondering, I probably should go. I kind of have to go pee-pee.
Okay, and listen, Ed, before you go, tell the people where they can find you one last time, please?
Yeah, on YouTube, Ask America with Edgar, and on Twitter, @PuppetEdgar. And if you just Google Puppet and Edgar together on Instagram and TikTok, you'll find it. But my long-term adventures, whenever you want to find them, are most easily found on YouTube. And we are hell-bent to get 100,000 subscribers, because I'm told that if I do, I get a slice of cake.
Everybody go follow Puppet Edgar. And last thing, Elon Omar, do not go easy on her. You gotta find her again. You're the first journalist to ever ask her about her incestual marriage. So please, keep up the good work and go find her again, Ed.
All right, I love you, buddy. Stay safe.
And Deontay wants to say goodbye?
Goodbye, Ed. I'll see you later. I'll be working in the coal mine if you need me.
Oh, buddy, all right, stop suffering abuse, buddy.
There's no abuse here. It's all consensual.
All right, get out of here. Do you like Deontay? Deontay smells bad. I need to wash that puppet. All right, Ed, thank you. Everybody go follow that puppet. What did you think about Ed? He was an interesting fellow, to say the least.
I'm a fan. I'm a fan. I enjoyed it.
Yeah, but could you imagine this? You're a white guy, which we found out. But not, the puppet's not white. And not only do you have to go to a protest in a potentially dangerous place, but you have to walk around with your hand up a puppet's asshole while also walking around with a camera crew. I don't know how he does it and not just totally attacked. I guess maybe people think it's like, you know, disarming because it's a puppet. But I would feel, I would think it would be even harder to bring a puppet and try to do that sort of interview than just, you know, holding a microphone and doing it.
You've done so many of these. Like, how many of these people you think are there actually organically? And how many of them are paid to be there, you figure?
Well, that's a good guy. That's a good question, because you're a very smart guy. So this is how it works, because I've been to enough of these protests. And I follow like PSL, it's like, or PLS, it's like Palestinian Liberation, so and so and so. So how it works is, there's usually like different groups, and they'll be either on Facebook or Instagram. And it's usually like one leader of that group, and somehow they're getting funding. And so it's like the most of the people at the, and it doesn't work like, even though they've been leaked stuff where people post Craigslist ads, like we're looking for protesters, that does happen. But when it comes to how does the protest industrial complex works? You just need like a few people to have a few social media accounts, and then they constantly share each other's content, like as if we're content creators, like Joe Rogan's universe, you know? They kind of help each other out, and they spread this message. And the people that run those accounts somehow get money from, I guess, NGOs. But there is a lot of money in this, believe it or not.
Well, I believe it. I remember when they were taking out the U-Hauls full of, you know, siege gear and bricks and stuff like that. Remember that? I was like, who's, I was dating a girl in Brooklyn. She was all into this stuff. And we had been locked down for months. We, they were gonna let us out of lockdown, and we were gonna go upstate and like, you know, go see the-
Hang out, get some fresh air.
Get some fresh air. Get a little hiking. And then she's like, we gotta go to this protest. There was like, dude, crap you not. It was a protest for like black trans rights outside of the Brooklyn Museum. We had been locked down for like three months. And she's like, these people need our help. And I looked at her, and I was like, you're 31, living with five other people in a row house in Brooklyn. People should be protesting for you. You need the help, dude. They need to be marching for you.
You're telling me that this girl was so delusional, she was unironically delusional. Let's go to a black marginalized transgender protest. Did you go?
No, of course not. That was it.
Hey, that's your problems, Gerard. You should have gone. You know, that's, there's a whole other ecosystem of these, and I don't even know if they're, they can get erections because they have such low estrogen. But there's a lot of these guys I noticed at the protests that are these like soy boy guys that are trying to like meet chicks. And so there is a whole-
And you show up, and you tell them, you argue with them, and then they end up going home with you. And these guys are like, but I've been agreeing with you for years!
They get cucked.
Everything a woman does is a test. Everything at all times.
Is that true? Well, real quick, before you get into the testing, because I think it was Shaquille O'Neal went viral. They said you should never cry in front of a woman. And I do agree with that. You should never cry. I mean, if your family member dies or something, I mean, maybe there's a few exceptions or you might shed a tear. But really, 100% no, you should not cry in front of a girl.
If you want to have sex with her again, do not cry in front of her.
I cry during sex. Is that bad?
Well, I mean, you know.
Usually the guy is like-
Well, yeah, you know, look, it's-
That was an unfunny joke. Okay, Gerard, women, though, why, what do you mean everything's a test?
Everything, everything with women is a test. They are the evolutionary arbiters of the genetics. So everything women do, whether even they're cognizant of it or not, they're testing to see whether you're worthy of their genetics. So when they're pushing these little weasels, you know, as Gad Saad calls them, sneaky fuckers, where they just think that they're gonna like, you know, sit there and go, you know, oh, I agreed with you. I agreed with everything, and oh, I know, look, I was gay, but it turns out I'm not. Can I go inside you? No, it's not the way it works. But when you stand up to them, these women may not like it at first, but then they come back around and they're like, this is a man. This is what a man is. And whether they hate you intellectually, they can't turn off the instinctual, the primal, the animal attraction inside them.
And you're right. And that's why I, sometimes I'll get a little stinky on purpose. I go go exercise, and I don't put on any cologne.
I remonet, baby.
You gotta do the pheromones. Because my babe, she'll, I get in there a little stinky, and I can see that it gets her going a little bit if I'm a little stinky. So what is that, too? And I love my baby prepaid wireless. And one of the reasons that I am attracted to her, she's tall. I feel like that's kind of my internal mating instinct, you know?
For sure, genetics.
So it's weird how we're like this. What about you, though? Why is dating in this modern era so annoying, Gerard?
Uh, the need for consent mostly, I think.
No, do not, this is not, we're anti-race. Bill Cosby, get out of here. We need consent.
I just wanted, no, it's part of the pillaging, you know? You know, can you imagine how brutal? You know, because those old, you know, I have Viking blood in me, and they used to have the long houses where all the different families, they'd live together at once. And we all know that women, they sink when they're in proximity to one another. Can you imagine?
What do you mean? Oh, their periods get in sync. Well, you know, actually, real quick, a little lesson about the world. Did you know, do you know the cycles of the moon? How long a moon cycle is?
30 days.
It's actually 28 days. And did you know a year is actually 13, 28 days? If you broke it down evenly, it's 13, you know, 13 months.
Are you into astrology? Are you a space racist?
A little bit. I'm a big space, I used to be a space denier, and now I'm a space believer. But my point is, I was a big space denier. But the, back to my point, what was I just saying about?
13, 28.
Yes, so the, a woman does not, you think, oh, a woman has her period every month. Not true. They actually have 13 periods a year because they are cycles on 28 days, which actually links up with the moon. And the moon cycle is 28 days. So, and that equals 365 days when you multiply it. So, you know, it's kind of crazy that the women's vaginal period cycles link up with the moon. Isn't that crazy?
It is. It is certainly crazy.
What do you think that is, then? Do you think the sun is the penis and the moon is the vagina?
I haven't seen evidence to the contrary, you know?
You haven't seen any evidence denying my claims?
I can't, I can't argue in opposition to it.
And if you think about photosynthesis, isn't that the sun just giving the earth anal?
Yes, it's exactly what it is, yes.
Non-consensual anal.
And this is why, this is why industry hacks like Neil deGrasse Tyson won't come here.
And debate me! Neil deGrasse Tyson will never debate me!
The hacks can't handle it.
They can't handle it because I know that the sun is a penis, and I know that the moon is a vagina. And NASA doesn't want to admit that, and I'm calling you out, Neil deGrasse Tyson. We know that the sun is a penis, and we know photosynthesis is the sun's semen landing on the plants and growing them. Now, what is the hardest drug that you've ever done and your worst experience while on that drug?
The hardest drug that I've ever done was something called Latinas. The hardest drug that I've ever done was something called Latinas.
No, girl, no, have you really, what about, have you ever done this stuff? This is RFK stuff. It's called Methane Blue, and it makes me pee like 20 times a day, but I feel, I feel so much better. You can just put a little, like, you put it in there? Look at that. And then you drink this? That's probably too much. You see this? Look how good this is. You just take a sip, RFK, me and...
You don't shake it or nothing?
No, I kind of want to hit it. I want it to hit hard. It's a little spicy.
Yeah.
Mmm. And to see no blue in my teeth. And actually, I would actually put it all in my teeth like I did in that city council meeting, but I, it stains your fillings, if you have any fillings, so...
Yeah, we used to have, we used to have good ecstasy back in the day. That was, that was...
In New York?
That was the big one, yeah. Like, you'd have these big dance clubs.
And you would take the stamped pills, though, or what would you take?
You know, there's what, like, you think you'd take, and like, where you think your boundaries would be, and then there's like 4 o'clock in the morning with, you know, the raving Asian chick, and she just, you know, says, open your mouth, and you're like, okay.
And you're in a kitchen? You're always in a kitchen, Gerard. Why are you always in a kitchen when it's 4:00 a.m. after a rave?
That's what the food is, bud.
Well, you're not eating much food if you're on, maybe you eat food while you're high on ecstasy.
No, no, no. Back in those days, there were, you know, I was in, I was a goddess. I was, I was in phenomenal shape. I was, oh, should've seen me in my prime.
Why don't you get on Ozempic?
I'm allergic to it.
But you know, they say Ozempic has a lot of bad side effects, and I do believe that to be true, but I know people that got on Ozempic and it changed their life. I'm not saying you need to get on it, but I'm kind of like in this weird gray zone where it's like, I don't know if it's good for you, like, obviously it's bad for you, but if it helps some people lose weight, which makes them feel better, look better, I mean, is it like a cost-benefit analysis? Maybe it is worth it for something.
The thing is, I'm so handsome, I'm so charismatic.
You are a handsome guy. No homo, pause. You're a handsome man, Gerard.
I have to feel like God took my metabolism away to give everybody else a chance at the, at breeding, so I don't, I don't want to spit in the face of God, you know?
No, we don't want to, we don't want to spit in the face of God.
So, you know, you gotta, this right here, this is, this is the price I have to pay. This is like, you know, when you make the fastest runner wear ankle weights, you know, they just, you...
Yeah, to even things out, I get it.
You just, you make, you make me pear-shaped. You make me look like a melted crayon.
Okay, and we've been joking around all day, but now we're having a serious time. You have called out a lot of corruption like I have too, and ideologically, you and I align on a lot of stuff, but right now, I'm having this existential crisis where obviously I'm a Trump supporter. I love Trump. I support Trump 100%. I'm not even trying to virtue signal when I say that. I love the guy. I think he's awesome. Is Donald Trump perfect? But nobody's perfect, you know what I mean? But I think Donald Trump's the best there ever was, in my personal opinion, but I'm not trying to deride Trump. But I feel like right now with this administration, they're having so many wins that this Epstein release is clouding all the good stuff that's happening, and as a supporter of Trump, I see my friends, a guy I really respect, Alex Rosen, who's been calling out Trump. I haven't talked to him about it, but I have to, you know, Alex is my friend, and he's saying a lot of stuff that is not wrong, but I would like it if Trump could prove us all wrong that think that we're never gonna see it. So I guess we're just kind of at an inflection point, and this Epstein, because we're such idiots and we get distracted so easy, it's ruining all the good wins. So where do you stand as a libertarian on this Epstein and Trump and the deep state? Like, do you believe there is a fight between Trump and the deep state, and do you think that Trump wants to release it and then they're not letting him? Or do you think that Trump possibly could be in on it, which I don't necessarily agree?
Three things. One, I think it's a good thing. It's a very healthy thing that the right, the quote-unquote "right" is having this infighting now, because this is what we hate about Democrats. We hate that Democrats, they get the word from on high, and they all get on message, and then they turn in the lemmings, and they just say the same things, they record the same...
Tweet the same things, record the same things, literally.
So I think it's a very healthy thing that people on the right are supporting Thomas Massey and saying, Trump, calm down. I think it's a very healthy thing that people are like, hey, Pam Bondi, you said you saw the files, and you said 8 o'clock Friday, you said, so like, us holding our own side accountable is a very, very healthy thing, because it's something that's showing everybody else that, hey, look, we're not just sycophants, you know, this whole idea of MAGA is a cult while the left is literally chanting in unison, right? So I think it's a very good thing. That said, we're never gonna get the Epstein files.
And I agree.
We're never gonna get the Kennedy files. We're never gonna get any of these things, and now they're, what they're doing is even more gross, Pam Bondi especially, where she's laying the groundwork, she's laying pipe for miss, my files to go missing, names to go missing, entire countries to go missing in these redacted and burnt and files, and it's like, oh, we wanted to give you the files, but those damn Democrats in the deep state. It's like, yeah, okay, whatever.
I mean, it's, it's hard to argue that. I want to give them Pam and everybody the benefit of the doubt because it has been less than 100 days, but I think with these Epstein files, it's gonna be similar to the 9/11 Commission report, where they'll give us a report, but there's things that are gonna be redacted, and they'll tell us, oh, well, we have to protect the victims, and yes, I'm all about protecting the victims of a sex crime. I agree with that, but, you know, you trying to protect the victims shouldn't protect the truth from coming out. So that's kind of where we're at, this influx, and I'm just really worried because I think Trump has already got the ceasefire in Ukraine. Everything that he said he was gonna do with January 6th, he did, and that's why I'm gonna support Trump no matter what, even if he does stuff that I don't agree with, because I know that he saved a lot of people's lives that were there supporting him on January 6th, and whether you like their style of going to the Capitol or not, whether you think the protest was peaceful or not, they were still railroaded and had the Department of Justice weaponized against them, especially when, I think it was 45% of the FBI's force was weaponized against literal January 6ers, people that walked around the Capitol. So I really, really, really love that Donald Trump helped them and my friend Lou Coffee. So I'm going to obviously give Trump the benefit of the doubt, but at what point do people stop giving the benefit of the doubt, Gerard?
Well, here's the thing, man. I mean, I love Thomas Massey. I think he's been great.
See, I like this Massey stuff, too, and I love Thomas Massey. I love Thomas Massey.
You know, Trump, when he, when he tries to tweet at people and, you know, apply leverage and all this stuff, you know, he's used to being the boss. The president's not the boss. The president's a servant.
I agree with that. Even though Trump is a boss, really, the president is supposed to serve the people.
He's not Thomas Massey's boss. Thomas Massey, you just look at him and be like, you're not my supervisor. You know what I'm saying? Like, like, you ever had somebody try to tell you what to do in an office, and they're not your supervisor, and you're like, just because you told me to do this, I will never, ever do this.
I know, it has reverse effects.
Yes, you can't, so I mean, a little more diplomacy, but that's not Trump's style. I love the people that he's put in, and I love the plan that he has in place. I don't know. Stalin very famously said, "America can't stomach casualties." And I don't, the economic plan that they have in place, I think, is going to work, and I think it's necessary, to go from an internal revenue-based system to an external revenue-based system to try to attack the deficit. You know, the fact that there's people in America that don't have clean drinking water, but we're financing 40% of Somalia's GDP is just wrong, right? So, but do we have the wherewithal as a people to give it the 18 months, 24 months it's gonna take?
Well, we have no choice. We better, right?
No, because then they'll lose the midterms, and, you know, then they'll do nothing, and they, I don't know. I don't know if we're gonna get there. I don't, I think they might run out of time, and I don't know if, I think their big problem is not with what they're doing, they, they have a big problem with messaging. And to bring it full circle, guys like you, guys like me, we've been telling them, you need to invest in art, you need to get in on media, you need to get it, like, we've been telling conservatives.
Well, I think Trump has kind of, are you talking about conservatives? I think Trump's actually been very fair to independent content creators, more so than any president I've ever seen.
100%. You could thank Baron for that, right?
Yeah.
But do they have the machine to get the messaging out to the public necessary?
Well, I like, and you know, I'm just riding Trump's D all night, and I love that Caroline Levitt, too. I was, I'm very impressed with her. So you do, but you do, you do feel that shift where people are getting frustrated, Gerard?
I do, and I'm already frustrated with Pam Bondi. You know, there's a reason why, you know, Pam Bondi is the only one of his cabinet officials where the deep state was like, oh, yeah, go ahead, you can average, go on in.
And to be fair to my friend Matt Gaetz, you know, he's a good guy, you know, they railroaded him once they knew he was gonna be the Attorney General, because they probably realized that, you know, Matt Gaetz wasn't the Attorney General of Florida when Epstein was doing all of these sex crimes. So I don't know, I just feel like that's an awfully weird coincidence, but I also don't think, and I just know, I have to know this, like, I just had to feel this with every ounce of my heart. Donald Trump, I mean, unless somebody told, I don't think Donald Trump hired Pam Bondi specifically to protect Epstein. Like, I know I've seen that narrative. I find that hard to believe.
I hate, I hate the, just like, guys that blame everything on Jews and stuff like that, and everything's Israel, and there's this whole thing where it's like, you know, but this, you know, like, the guys that are like, every, every night they get up and, you know, thank Nick Fuentes for his existence, and look under their bed for a, for a tunnel with a rabbi. Yeah, those guys suck, dude. But at the same time, it's a very bad look that the only Republican congressman Trump wants to call out is the guy who doesn't take AIPAC money. It's like, ah, it's a bad coincidence.
I know, and I just want to say, [SINGING] I love Israel, and I love rabbis, and I love matzoh balls, and I think their culture is the best culture in the world, and I love, Sam Heitler's a song, "I Love Jews." Is that what it was called, Brandon?
Yeah, I believe so. I think Pearl has one, too.
She does? Oh, crap, am I gonna get canceled? No, she, Pearl's was, I thought hers was complimentary.
Pearl's was, "I Love Nick Fuentes."
Oh. And then Nick said, "I love Heitler"?
Let's, let's, yeah, no.
I didn't say it. I didn't say it. You're not allowed to say that on the internet.
Speaking of, speaking of Patriot Front losing their jobs because of Cash Patel, I'd like to see that gay fed Nick Fuentes lose his job by Cash Patel, too.
Let's get into the Nick Fuentes debate, because I was having this debate with somebody the other day, and they were like, I said to him, and I've said this on the show, and I've met Nick, and I've talked to Nick, and Nick and I, you know, we're not besties by any means, but I do believe that he is, he has, maybe I don't agree with his points, but he is funny, right? Let's just give him that. I think we can agree that, that...
Comedic timing?
Well, he has good comedic timing, and so this is why I see Nick, I'm like, he is, he is a talented person. I hate that he is so polarizing, like, I think that he could still be polarizing, but he's canceled, and for me, it seems like it's just he's never gonna get a fair shot, even if he was the funniest guy in the world. So I just, to me, because he's so anti-Israel, it seems like such a waste, a guy that is actually, I think, talented. But when I come to the talent, is he talented because he's a CIA agent that works for the FBI? You know, that's what I'm saying, like...
Everybody else on January 6th had to answer the piper. Everybody else.
That's the argument. This is what the guy was saying, and he's like, Alex, how do you not think Nick's a fed? Because he's the only guy that didn't get arrested for January 6th, and think about how bad the FBI wanted to arrest Nick Fuentes for January 6th, and when he makes his point, I'm like, I can't argue. Why wouldn't they arrest Nick Fuentes? He's one of the most famous, you know, white supremacists, even though he's Hispanic, in the world, so wouldn't he be like Enrico Tarrio, or wouldn't he be some sort of target that they're just dead set on getting?
I directed something called Mafia States of America, and did a lot of work back in my Valuetainment days with mafia people, and Sammy Gervano, who was very...
Sammy the Bull, famous hitman.
Very famous government informant, you know, he said, and he quipped, he goes, anybody in an era of Rico, anybody in our life walking the streets is because they want them walking the streets. Meaning, the only way these guys are out there is because they're singing.
Yeah, they have...
I look at that, and I look at, look at everything that's happened to everybody around Fuentes.
I know, Nick is, I hate to say it, Nick, you're a very toxic guy, dude. You can't, I can't get near him because he can cause any problems.
Somehow he comes out of all this unscathed?
Listen, you're making some good points, but for me, you know, maybe he is a fed. I just hate that I see a guy, still a young man, and I think he can be successful, and I believe that Nick will maybe have a come to Jesus one day and realize, you know what, I'm...
I thought that's his whole thing. He's supposed to be like...